It is tonight, huh?
I was gonna talk to you guys about... Nobody has been checking all the visas that have been coming. I almost said not to. Don't check the visas. I don't know how many, uh, them people. There's a lot of them, believe me. They've been in this country. Walking across the border. They've heard, but they seem fine. Thousand bullets. They have backup? I don't see why they don't... Why they're our enemies. Report is a big thing. Security. Certainly if you can see them.
Yeah.
You can go home now.
We agree with you. Don't worry. We agree with you. Our security and public security, employee security, everybody's security.
Because everybody is saying all of it.
It is 5:01. And I call to order the meeting at the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, its successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Nagretti?
Here.
Councilmember McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox? Mayor Garcia?
Here. Uh, this is the time when we have public comments, and I do have one card, so I will call L. Cotillo up for...
I'd rather just talk to you this way.
That's fine.
We need you in the microphone.
They need you. They need you on the microphone.
Long as you don't have a gun.
Yes.
They need you for on the record.
Yes, and you have three minutes.
Okay, well, the reason I was up here was to make sure, and hopefully you guys are preparing for something that might happen up here that happened down a hill. You guys gotta make sure the cops got all the bullets they need, all the guns they need. This place would be so easy to take over. They could kill thousands of people just by hiding in them bushes on the freeway where the hills are above the freeway. They could be walking up there in the daytime getting ready. They could cause an accident on the freeway. Cause thousands of people to be stuck in the freeway and just walk along the hills. They are 15s and kill all them people. That's what they do. They kill because they want to kill Americans. And the easiest way they can find to do it is that. Plus, we got that airport here they'd love to have their hands on. That airport should have triple security on it right now, but not security that you can see. If you got security you can see, you don't have security. But I don't think you're paying much attention anyway, so I'm telling you, be ready. People, I told someone three weeks ago, nobody's paying attention to all this stuff that's gonna happen in this country. And the guy agreed with me, and I won't tell you who it was. And all of a sudden, Paris gets hit, San Bernardino gets hit, and you never know, this could be the next one. And this place, they could take over this high desert and... No time at all. Them guys don't go by the law. They do, they got their own law, and they do what they want. And it don't matter who they kill. If they come in here right now, they'd kill every one of us sitting here, sitting here. They'd kill your babies. My cousin was in the... Was a congressman. He worked with the FBI a lot. And he said, "Believe me, all they want to do is kill Americans." He said, "That's their number one thing, is to kill Americans." They don't care if it's a two-year-old baby.
You have 30 seconds.
A 60-year-old woman or a 20-year-old kid. They want to kill Americans. And they're all over this country right now, so please get ready. And if there's a war, actually, we're in a time of war right now. I got a letter right from a congressman that says we're at war. And they announce it every day in the news. And if there's a war, no, there shouldn't be any law for us. We should be able to carry our guns. Nobody should be telling us what to do if there's a war. We got a right to protect ourselves. And I don't think anybody should...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Yeah, okay. You listen to me like... I know, I don't think any of you listen to me, but...
Thank you very much. That was the only card that I had at this time, and I don't see anyone else that wants to come up and address the council. So I will ask our declaration of closed session items by city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the SCLAA agenda, there's one item, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 1. Case name and number, SEC versus City of Victorville, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority at All. Case number, USDC EDCV 13-0776. Now, the council agenda, there are three items, the first of which is conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 1. Case and number, SEC, it's the same case and number as I just recited, so I'm going to refer to that. Item C is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 sub B. Position title is city manager. And the final item is conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Based on advice of legal counsel and existing facts and circumstances, a point has been reached in the opinion of the City Council that the city is facing significant exposure to litigation. Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 2. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 sub E sub 1, the facts and circumstances need not be disclosed as the city believes they are not yet known to the potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. Number of potential cases, one.
Thank you. It is now, uh, we will now adjourn and recess to closed session, and we will convene our regular session at 6:00 PM.
Does the state legislature live by that line?
No.
Do they even claim to?
No.
It's for us, not for them.
Of course. How long have you been a politician?
I have kind of believed that local government's the only... And you have to talk to them, you have to see them come up to you. And, and, and power starts to be important to people, you know?
Time to go the next side of me.
There's some people, it's a big deal when they're on the city council, but, you know...
I never quite understood Tip O'Neill's point when he said... Government, he said, politics. Guess I took that to mean all government is local, but that's really not true.
No.
You got national and state government.
No, I think he had...
But this is the least political, I think.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's the purest form, you know? It's grossly imperfect, but it's just better than anything else there is.
It is 6 o'clock. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Nagretti?
Here.
Councilmember McEckren?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. Uh, may we have declaration of closed session items by city attorney, please?
You, okay. The matters on which the City Council met in closed session are listed in the agenda, and they consist of one item on the SCLAA agenda, which is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 1. Case number, uh, name and number, SEC versus City of Victorville, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority at All. Case number, USDC EDCV 13-0776. There are three items on the City Council agenda. First is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 1. Case number, uh, name and number, SEC versus City of Victorville, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority at All. Case number, USDC EDCV 13-0776. The second matter was public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 sub B. Position title, city manager. And the final item is conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Based on advice of legal counsel and existing facts and circumstances, a point has been reached in the opinion of the City Council that the city is facing significant exposure to litigation. Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 2. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 sub E sub 1, the facts and circumstances need not be disclosed as the city believes they are not yet known to the potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. Number of potential cases, one. There were no reportable actions from tonight's closed session.
Thank you. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation this evening. The invocation will be led by Bishop Ruben Hogen of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia, so please stand.
Oh, our kind of loving heavenly Father. We come before thee this evening. We want to thank thee for all the blessings that we have received during the day. We are grateful for our families. We are grateful for the opportunity to be here in this meeting. Our kind of heavenly Father, we ask thee to please bless this meeting with thy Spirit, so that they will, these good men and women in the City Council of the City of Victorville, that they will be blessed with thy Spirit, so that we'll be able to go over the items that they have in their agendas tonight, and that we'll be able to come in agreement on all the things that they need to discuss tonight. Heavenly Father, we also ask thee to help us to remember as we come closer to our holidays that we can remember the true meaning of this period of Christmas, so that we'll be able to remember that we are celebrating the birth of thy son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Bless the... This our city, that we will be able to continue to have a beautiful city and that we continue to have a good leadership in our city. And also, heavenly Father, we ask thee to please bless us as we finish our meeting, and then we'll depart to our homes, so that we'll be able to arrive and get back to our home in safety. And this things, Lord, we ask thee humbly in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
... allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two presentations this evening. The first presentation is a certificate for Rainier Yaboot, Civil Rights Memorial Essay winner, and I'll come down to present it. Captain Gonzalez here. Please come forward and join us. I am pleased to present the, yes, this certificate of recognition to Rainier Yaboot. Am I pronouncing your name correct?
It's Rainier Yaboot. Rainier Yaboot.
Rainier?
Yeah.
Rainier Yaboot. For your winning essay about civil rights leader.
A. A Philip Randolph.
A.
A Philip Randolph.
Adolf?
A Philip.
A Philip Randolph. Excuse me. I heard him with all these pronunciations. Rainier's essay was chosen as part of a contest organized by City of Victorville and the Victorville Elementary School District. A portion of Rainier's essay will be displayed on a bronze plaque at the City's Civil Rights Memorial located next to the City Hall. We hope to fill our Civil Rights Memorial with many more plaques as we continue to hold essay contests in the future. Congratulations, Rainier. Now Superintendent Gonzalez, would you like to say a few words?
In light of the events that have happened over the past week, San Bernardino, LA's threat today, this takes on a better meaning, especially, well, for me, I don't know if he realizes it yet. I want to tell you, first of all, how proud I am, not only for winning the essay contest, but for doing your research and finding someone who's not one of the more well-known civil rights leaders. Yet, A. Randolph, A. Philip Randolph, had a significant impact on the civil rights movement. So I'm proud of you for doing that. I want to thank the City of Victorville for giving us this opportunity for our students, and I was at the, the community vigil last night, and one of the speakers talked about becoming one, and I know you were there. These types of events, they do it for us. They bring us together, have us work as one, and it's for these beautiful children that we do it, so thank you so much.
You are so welcome, and congratulations.
Just so the public knows, we move out of the way because it can look a little bit odd. They take photos, not realizing that our heads are sort of in the background, and because of the dais, it looks sort of like a floating head, so we try to get out of the photos as often as we can. It's a little bit awkward sometimes. It helps when we have taller individuals who can hide behind. Kids, not so much.
Our second presentation is by Fire Chief Dan Mancy, Police Chief Sam Lucia, City Engineer Brian Gangler, and Emergency Preparedness Manager Dana Welborn regarding the city's preparations for El Nino and the third renewal of the city's designation as a storm-ready city from the National Weather Service.
Feel truly blessed to work within the City of Victorville. I've had the opportunity to work with numerous cities throughout the county. And I know I've told Doug Robertson this before, but I'll tell you too, you have a very, very well-run city. And the El Nino preparation certainly reinforces that. Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening for this presentation. I am joined with Sheriff Captain, Police Chief Sam Lucia, City Engineer Brian Gangler, and Dana Welborn, who's in charge of our emergency, City Emergency Services Coordinator. We're here to provide you with an update regarding El Nino and the renewal of the storm-ready city. And I'm gonna tell you why. You should be proud of your staff and why I believe this is such a well-rounded city. Recently, I had the opportunity to go with Dana to a local radio station, and we did a an interview with AM 960, it's gonna be broadcasted actually on all the channels, about El Nino, and I made the statement that I believe that the City of Victorville is the absolute leader in emergency preparedness for El Nino. You guys are the model city. And I have the perspective from the county where I'm traveling around, I'm meeting with the CSDs, I'm meeting with the different cities. I'm going to the meetings in San Bernardino, even meeting with the larger cities. And the preparations that I've seen the city staff do are excellent. Now, this El Nino, some newscasters, I think they're playing a little bit on it, they're calling it the Godzilla El Nino. It's gonna be the worst ever. I don't know if that's true or not, but I learned a long time ago that I would rather prepare and in planning mitigate an emergency before I ever have to respond. September, the city staff's starting meeting together, and I'll let these gentlemen explain a little bit what we've been doing. But do you know what the difference between a work group and a committee is? Committees are people that talk. Work groups, they get stuff done. And this group has literally completed a list of things to prepare the city for the possibility of flooding. The idea behind the Cities El Nino group is to get everybody working together. Look, I know that my guys are prepared and ready to go to protect life, property, and the environment, and I know that we're gonna have Sam and his guys helping us. But what can we do? What can we do to work with the city to prepare for those meetings? How do we drop the boundaries and make sure there's no duplication, efforts, that we keep costs in line and realistic, yet meet the needs of the city in the emergency response? So I'm gonna let Dana take the podium next and explain a little bit about the storm-ready city and what his, what he's done as the emergency manager.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to take a brief moment to update you on our renewal and certification of our National Weather Service designation as a storm-ready city and several of the actions that we're taking to prepare for El Nino. So as some of you know, as approximately 98% of all presidentially declared disasters are weather-related, it is extremely important that we're prepared for any severe weather event. The storm-ready certification by the National Weather Service recognizes cities that have taken specific proactive measures to prepare themselves for storms and severe weather events. These steps include emergency preparedness and hazard mitigation, infrastructure improvements, public outreach, and emergency communications. And I'm proud to say that this designation is held by only one other city within the high desert, and it carries some weight. And I'm also proud to say that it's our third renewal. As some of the others are gonna discuss some of the other items, I want to focus primarily on our public outreach as it relates to our storm-ready city. And our working group has prepared a comprehensive public outreach plan. As such, you can see, if you've read the rec pages, we've got information in our rec pages. You're gonna see information on our electronic message board, and we're scheduling staff or public outreach meetings with staff in January and February. As Chief Mancy has spoken about, we've recorded several public service announcements, and you'll also hear El Nino information on several of the high desert stations. Y102 and AM 960 have both been partners with us and helping us to get that information out. One of the things that we're really proud of is we've got a phone resource line already dedicated, and we've got a website also dedicated. And this website and the phone number give information on what El Nino is, what to expect, and it gives a lot of information regarding personal preparedness. We want people to prepare and be part of the team. So we need them to get out there and do their portion of getting ready. But it's gonna include things such as sandbag locations, links to flood insurance information, and many other useful educational items. So if I might plug those numbers and get them out there for the public, So if I might plug those numbers and get them out there for the public, that number is 955-5003. And the website is victorville.ca.gov. And go to our El Nino link and the public can access, access that information. Additionally, I'd like to let you know that if we have an incident, we have the ability to transmit that information electronically directly to the County Office of Emergency Services through their web EOC program. And that's important for us to get that initial damage estimate out to them and also to help us with cost recovery. And also, I don't know if they were going to mention it, but we've also sent our staff recently to El Nino Cost Recovery Training put on by the State Office of Emergency Services. So again, I appreciate your time and encourage the public to visit those websites. And you'll see more information as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
More other people to introduce, Sam?
Good morning, or good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I just wanted to share with you what the police department, the sheriff's department is doing to prepare locally and countywide for this. Locally, you all know that we've worked with various other city departments and county departments, and we've cleared some debris from the riverbed so that we can enhance the water flow through there. All PD units will be equipped with a 75-foot to 100-foot throw bag. It's an emergency throw bag in the event that there is a hasty rescue that presents itself. Every deputy is receiving training on the use and the throwing and the correct recoiling of that, of that rope at the trimester qualification. So every deputy sheriff in the county of San Bernardino will receive training on that, which was an actually a training session that was put on by County Fire. Patrol is not a swift water rescue trained group, and they'll refrain from entering the water. But they are going to be, the expectation is that they're going to be out there to report and observe and get the message to the, to the, to the right department. Victorville Station has a staff-certified diver and swift water rescue expert, which is assigned to our station. Countywide, what we're doing is aviation is working with maintenance schedules to avoid any unnecessary downtime of our air force. And we will have five patrol ships available plus the two air rescue Hueys, air rescue 306 and 307. All of the swift water rescue is performed by the patrol helicopters because they're the ones equipped with, with the hoists. We'll have four tracking canines and search and rescue dog teams available. As I said, the entire county dive team is, is in a stage of readiness, and they are receiving additional training as we speak. And there is even talk about staging them when the serious rains begin at places that are, that are prone to flooding, such as the Mojave River and Rock Springs Road and the Mojave River and the Narrows area. The TEN system, which is the Telephone Emergency Notification System, it's a, it's a county database. And it is a system that notifies all landline telephone numbers in a designated area of an emergency. And the sheriff's department is in control of that and will have the ability to use that. And the sheriff's department operations center will likely go up and stay up when the heavy rains begin. And through the department operations center, we'll provide logistics and information for the public and how to best deploy resources.
Frank Gangler?
Thank you. So we've been working with the other departments in the El Nino planning. And some of the things we've done is we've mapped all of our storm drain system and flood control channels. So we know where every inlet is and we have access to that information. That's going to be available in our GIS. And then another thing we've done is we've mapped the areas that are prone to flooding. So we've worked with our Public Works Maintenance people on that because by experience, we know what has been a problem in the past. We just completed a project on Air Expressway and Turner Wash. You probably wouldn't notice it when you're driving along there because it's underneath, there's a culvert and there was a lot of erosion. So we just completed that to protect the roadway and protect the wash. Another project that's going to be coming up soon is on Verde Street where we had the local flooding problem a while back. We're going to be adding some inlets. We're going to make larger inlets so they're less likely to get clogged. And we're going to intercept the flow upstream with some inlets at Center and Lacy, which has flows that reach Verde Street. And we're also prepared, if necessary, like we have in the past, because in 2009, 2010, we had some flooding problems. If necessary, we can use emergency contractors to do emergency projects for repairs. And that's basically what we've, what our involvement has been.
Now every one of the items that we've heard tonight, you have to imagine that everybody's working together. The fire department's taking the information from Public Works and from code enforcement. And we're assisting code enforcement with their duties, cleaning out the channel, where they're going door-to-door, providing the information to our residents. The preparation in the city's been outstanding. But the city preparing, the fire departments, the sheriff's department preparing, isn't enough. We do need to remind our citizens that they need to prepare their households. They need to examine their, their, the rainfall on their property, make sure they're not going to have any debris flow. If they're going to need sandbags, get those early enough, get those early. You can go to Home Depot or Lowe's or they go to any county fire station or Public Works and pick up sandbags. We also have all our fire stations sock with sand. During an emergency, we're always happy to help you, help the public. We're willing to come out, but it's always got to be life over property. We're willing to sandbag people's property, but if there's somebody that's trapped in a flood or needs immediate assistance, that's going to be our primary role. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Just a, I don't know if this is a question or a comment. We know from some past storms that flooding areas we're concerned about, Brian, I appreciate that we're focused on those. But a lot of that is in Old Town. And the mayor made a comment today that I hadn't really given any thought to, that there are some number of our Spanish-speaking population where English is not their first language. And some number of those folks, especially the elderly, aren't even connected to the internet or they don't check our websites. They're not comfortable or familiar with computers. I'm, I hope our public outreach is somehow, and maybe through the Spanish-language stations, radio stations. I hope we're, we're making some efforts in that area.
Sue Jones is your PIO. She's been doing a wonderful job, and this has been one of her focuses. She's been working with Dana and I to do that. One of the things that we've done is developed a brochure for our Spanish-speaking customers. And when we go door-to-door, if we run into somebody that has a limited English, we're making sure that we're providing that brochure to them as well. But getting good outreach to all our citizens is very, very important to us.
I had one of the radio stations actually come to my office to speak to me regarding El Nino. And they want for me to at least once a week, go to their station and in Spanish, you know, inform the people, you know, the information that I gather from the city here. And so maybe through that I can also be of assistance.
Absolutely. And the work group would love to work with you on that. If you would like any, any of the city staff to speak Spanish or firefighter or sheriff's deputy to go with you, we'd be happy to do that in the Spanish language as well. Thank you.
That would be ideal. I will let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that help. Now, may we have our city clerk present the agenda to council and revisions to the agenda?
Okay. The City Council of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents are, to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. The following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. Agenda item description, revision to agenda item number D2. Agenda item description should be corrected to reflect resolution number 05-076 instead of resolution number 15-075. That's all the revisions.
Thank you. We do not have any appeal hearings this evening, so I will be moving on to public hearings. And I do have one card. Vida Adams.
Madam Mayor, could you formally open the public hearing?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I do open the public hearing and I do have one card, and that is Vida Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councilman. I was the originator of the zone change request for the area on Bear Valley Road. And just want to thank staff for doing the work that they had to move that along. It wasn't something that they could do for one property, but we all saw that it was a need in that unique area. So I thank you for moving it to its fruition. And I'm sure that that's a good thing for Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only card that I had, so I now close the public hearing. Do we have any? Ordinance number 2351?
Were there any comments? No? Okay.
Do we have any comments from council?
The title of ordinance, I'll go ahead and read that. Ordinance number 2351. An ordinance of the City Council of Victorville approving a zone change to reclassify approximately 33 acres of property from C-2T, General Commercial Transitional, to C1 Neighborhood Service on property located on the north side of Bear Valley Road between Balsam Road and 7th Avenue. And to reclassify approximately three-quarters of an acre of property from R3 High Density Residential to P-C Public and Civic to C-1 Neighborhood Service on property located at the southwest corner of Desert Knoll Drive and Mesa Drive.
For adoption of ordinance number 2351 and wait for the reading?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy to introduce and wait for the reading of ordinance 2351. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank the staff for those maps. They're very clear and readable and easy to find. So, thank you.
Yes, they are.
Now we have council action for resolution number 15-075.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Mayor Protam Cox. Those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry. Was that 15-076?
Yes, it was. I'm sorry. 076. The one in D2 is 076. This one is correct.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So I did cover both. D1.
Resolution. Okay.
D1 has been covered. Okay. Lost my place. I'm sorry. So we move on to the consent calendar then?
The recommendation is the consent that calendar items C1 through C10 be approved with one motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protam Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to approve the consent calendar.
Now we have D, written communications. I don't have any cards at this time. D1, California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery. Recycle City, County Recycling Grant. City clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council accept the grant funds, ratify the expenditure plan, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for program administration.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protam Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, Maintenance of Effort-Based Year Level for Measure I Funding is set forth in resolution number 15-076 entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, State of California, Adopting the Measure I 2010-2040 Maintenance of Effort-Based Year Level." Please read the recommendation. City clerk?
The recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution number 15-076, which sets the maintenance of effort-based year level for fiscal year 2008 through 2009 at $0.
I'll move for approval and very happy that it said zero. You can only go up from there, right? Thank you, Brian.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Councilmember Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Request to Approve a Memorandum of Understanding for Technical Assistance with an Open Data Project Through the What Works Cities Program. Read the recommendation.
Okay. The recommendation is that the city council approve a memorandum of understanding between the city and What Works Cities Partners, Results for America, and the Sunlight Foundation for Technical Assistance on an Open Data Designed Project, Designed to Formulate a Comprehensive Open Data Policy That Will Improve the Supply of Data Made Available to the Public in a More Useful and Responsive Way, As Well As Promote the Use of Such Data and Evidence in Decision-Making.
Did we have questions?
This funding for the whole program or this year only?
This is essentially during a 90-day period. We are still eligible. We had a group of staff that, Mayor Protam Cox, I know you participated in sort of a roundtable discussion that took a better part of a day. We have several other items that the What Works Cities Initiative is still studying. This one we have been awarded. It's about $75,000 in free consulting work. And what they've told us is essentially this is sort of a baseline level. They want to see us get through this, and then we can discuss the other project areas that, that we all discussed.
Anyone else?
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Presentation of Request to Approve the Purchase of a 2016 Kenworth T370 Conventional Cab Truck With Rogers Model 100RM3N5 Dump Body in the Amount of $116,837.86. City clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council and Water District Board of Directors award National Auto Fleet Group the piggyback purchase of one 2016 Kenworth T370 Conventional Cab Truck With Rogers Model 100RM3N5 Dump Body Under the National Joint Powers Alliance NJPA Contract Number 102811 And as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2015-2016 Capital Improvement Project CIP Budget.
Motion here?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Council, Mayor Protam Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, Consideration of Proposed New Employment Agreement for the City Manager.
The recommendation is that the city council consider approval of the proposed new employment agreement for the city manager. agreement for the city manager.
Councilmembers, any comments? Any discussion?
Just one quick overall comment. Much like the other issues we've had before, I believe there are separate parts to this actual proposed new employment agreement, so I recommend, I guess we were going to vote individually on those points. Is that what we plan on doing?
It's up to the mayor.
Yes, we should vote on each one individually. Do we start with term or?
I have a question. Disagreement made in the internet to the blank date of December 2015. Question going to supersede the other dated August 28th, so we come up literally with a brand-new agreement. Is the effective date January 1 or July 1, 2015? My understanding was that that's an item that we vote on. And quest was for your contract, but this contract be dated July 1, 2015, therefore it would expire June 30, 2019. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's...
That was my understanding. So it's, the term is from July 1, 15 to June 30, 19.
19, correct.
That's in the contract. That's not a change. Is that right, or is it a change?
I didn't know about, made it into this blank date, but I was looking for the rest of it. It's a, looking for the wording, but I don't know where it's at.
It's in section two, I think it's section two, paragraph D. Isn't that where it is?
I think for the purposes to be clear, I would go and make a motion that we set that as the term, July 1 of 2015 through 30th of 2019. Would that be my...
I believe that's in section six.
Six?
Yeah. Yes, under salary. It indicates it's to be applied retroactively and thereby commences of July 1.
Oh, yeah, that's why I couldn't find it. Sorry.
So we don't need that motion.
We don't need that then?
Oh, I kept looking at the terms, and it's under salary, and I...
I'll withdraw the motion.
We had a discussion on severance, and I'm, the severance period in this contract is 12 months. I don't frankly even believe it's a particularly relevant issue, but I'm going to make a motion that we amend that severance period to nine months.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protam Cox, to amend the city manager's contract as severance to nine months. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The other item now is salary.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to go and make the motion that per the contract, we keep the salary as stated in the contract at $21,875 per month.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy, to keep the salary as stated in the contract on the agreement, on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries with Councilmember Negretti abstaining.
Is that the only, is that it?
Is that all that we had?
Well, and then to the form and scope of the actual rest of the wording in the contract, do we need to formally adopt that? Because there were some changes.
Yeah, well, I think a motion actually approving the document would be in order if you're done with the changes.
I'll move that we approve the document as respect to everything else. Because there were some changes.
Right.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the contract with the noted changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Motion carries with Councilmember Negretti abstaining.
Now we move on to item D8, Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority Project Status.
We need to go to item number D6.
Oh, D6, Mayor. Did I skip here? Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Project Timeline and Fee Explanation for 33-Degre Corner Yogurt Project. City Clerk, please read the recommendation.
This item is brought forward at the request of council for discussion.
Actually, I think I'm the one that asked that this be agendized. And I don't want to overly focus on one particular project. My more serious concern was the BBWRA fees. All the other fees didn't seem unusual to me. Even the BBWRA fee for the number of seats in the restaurant didn't seem odd. What seemed so odd to me was an $8,000 sewer connection fee for this little 1,200-foot My assumption was, and is, that when the developer built this project, he would have been assessed all the fees that BBWRA would assess for sewer connection. So I'm just dumbfounded as to why individual tenants would have to pay that kind of a connection fee for a couple of sinks and a main drain.
So the way the unit was built, it was built with this unit unoccupied, and presumably at the time, the developer did not know if there was going to be a food-type, restaurant-type business in there, or say a dress shop, or something that wouldn't have the sewer impact. So there was no sink installed, there was no, you know, cleaning equipment installed that you need in a restaurant. So when the tenant improvements come in, then those things are installed, that's when those fees are assessed. That's kind of the short answer to it. We've got Chris Borcher, Director of Development here, as well as our building manager who can get into more detail. I think, and I don't, like you, I don't want to make this necessarily about just this one, one business. I think part of the difficulty with this is that the other restaurant that these owners own was previously a food establishment. So these sinks, these cleaning, you know, bays and things were already installed, and those fees were paid at their current location, the Corner Cafe, whereas this was simply an empty box. It was, wasn't designed, certainly it has plumbing, but what it gets attached to that drain ultimately is what causes those fees to be assessed.
So there's a sewer main that serves that building.
Yes.
But there is no direct sewer connection from this unit out to the main.
There is a connection, but it matters to BBWRA what type of business it is, and what equipment gets put in, gets put into the facility is what determines the impact to the plant. This is essentially the impact to the BBWRA plant because of additional drainage from what otherwise may have been, you know, a textile shop or a hair salon, or who knows what.
How do they come up with those numbers? Can, do you have any idea? I mean, I sit on BBWRA's board.
Might be a better question for your meeting. Is it next Wednesday or so, or Thursday? There is, in the agenda item, there is a calculation, so you can see the exact multipliers, but it's based on the number of sinks, it's based on the number of drains, it's based on the number of fixtures ultimately. Every faucet costs a little bit more money.
I could never find anything in all of that material that explained the $8,000. I got the $1,700 without any problem, but I...
Oh, okay. It's actually, I don't have a page number on here, but there's, you got 230, page 231, if you have it open there, but at the very bottom of the page, it lists the $8,000. It's four new floor sinks equals four, or excuse me, 16 fixture units at $200 each for $3,200. One new floor drain equals four fixture units. I don't have the answer to why a floor drain is four fixture units. Perhaps somebody from development does. That is a total of $800. And then five new sinks equals 20 fixture units at $200 for a total of $4,000.
And do we advise the person developing this unit ahead of time what that fee is going to be?
I can just say that typically, someone coming in for development is advised of all of the fees and advised of the fact that some of them are due upon, you know, issuing a permit. Others, impact-type fees, are not charged until certificate of occupancy. On this case exactly, I can't speak to whether or not, or how, they may have been advised.
You know, Doug, I'd be curious, not to be answered here tonight, but if this was a business, same type of business, but they were hooking into our wastewater treatment plant, what would the applicable comparable cost be for them to get...
That's actually a very good question. I know a lot of our, for our treatment plant, and this is not answering the question tonight because I don't want it to be that definitive about it, but a lot of our fees that were charged, that we charge for treatment, are based on the BBWRA fee, simply because we were brand-new, didn't have that level of sophistication done yet. But I'll definitely get that answer definitively to the council.
Well, and it just may, it may work itself into further discussion, whether strategic planning or beyond that, as to, you know, one of the ways that we can obviously be competitive and do, do better for businesses coming into the city, is if we're handling wastewater at our own plant, obviously we can be more competitive there. So just thought.
This was only for discussion, so we do not need a motion. So we move on to D7. Award of Service Contract for Completion of a Self-Evaluation and Update of the City's Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan. City Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council award a service contract to Disability Access Consultants, DAC, for the completion of an ADA-compliant self-evaluation and transition plan update.
That's my understanding, that there's two sources of funding, local transportation and community development block grants, that will pay this entire amount?
Actually, there's another split of funding, and Mr. Gunterd is coming down. He's the one that's been leading the staff team on this, so he can explain the other sources of funding and when they'll be coming in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The funding sources on this, LTF funds are initially to be tapped. We've discussed it with Brian Gangler, the city engineer, and he does have that funding available. We also plan on approaching CDPG for some additional funding on this, and also with the coming mid-year as well as budget period ahead of us, hopefully getting planning going on that as well, and integrating it into our budget planning for the coming year.
The key is that we get the contract awarded so that they can start the work. We've got a relatively long, but for the amount of work that needs to be done, actually a relatively short amount of time to get them started so that we can comply with the federal housing authority.
This is a $600,000 item that somehow, when we were budgeting back in April, May, June, we didn't know anything about. Can somebody explain to me why we didn't see this coming?
You want to take it, Chris, or you want me to?
Either way, I'm glad to take a shot at it. We actually had a, an action that we needed to respond to. It came up in very short order. We were notified, and I think that Chris Borcher has a little more information on it, but the city was drawn into an action involving HUD, and we were required to respond very short order. That response included putting together new plans and presenting them to HUD. Those are, that's exactly what this proposal is for over the course of four years, both for essentially inventorying the city for what the requirements are and meeting those requirements, as well as what actions need to be taken in terms of construction to correct those things and the timelines associated with those corrections.
We didn't know what those requirements were until we got pulled into this action?
That's correct. We were, literally, there was a HUD complaint filed against the city, which we ultimately prevailed on. However, in their investigation, during their investigation, they discovered that this plan had not been updated in quite some time since, actually, I think...
92.
1992, so before most of us were here, didn't even know about it, to be honest. So once we were notified, we were given this opportunity to self-certify and get the plan in order, so that's the purpose of that of tonight.
Any other discussion?
I just think it's nice that we have the LTF funds to help fund this. I mean, that's proper use of that funding. I wish we could put it elsewhere, but at least it's right for this.
Yeah, a lot of this is ramps throughout the city, and inspections of our existing ramps to get from the street to the sidewalk.
But this is just the evaluation of a plan. This isn't the work that needs to be done if somehow it's found to be deficient.
That is correct.
That's another...
That will be additional expense, and again, most of it would be from LTF. Those funds are set aside for non-vehicular traffic purposes.
Is it, is it safe to assume that if the plan hasn't been updated since 1982, there's a pretty good chance that our facilities are not updated as well?
I don't, I don't think so, actually. We've done quite a bit of new ramps throughout the city, a lot speedier than our friends at Caltrans have done. I'll just throw that in.
Herbs and corners and things like that.
Editorial comment.
Yeah, actually, you see a lot of that going on.
Yeah, we've done quite a bit. You know, this was just a plan that was on the shelf that, you know, we honestly, I had never even heard of the thing. We just knew it was the right thing to do, so we've been outdoing it.
Yeah, and I don't, I know you don't know this off the top of your head, Doug, but, or even Brian, but we do have a lot of money in LTF that we can't ever...
Yeah.
So this is the proper use of that money. That's what it's there for, so once we figure out what we need to do, we'll be able to...
That's correct.
That's exactly what this is for.
Thank you. Other discussion or make a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Mayor Protam Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority Projects Status. City Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council receive and file the report on the status of cost and schedule for Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority projects.
The purpose of this is to tell us what? It's over budget, under budget?
If you don't mind, I will, I will offer a couple of comments on it.
Please do.
Yeah, it's a lengthy explanation from the general manager about all the, why we have all the overruns. And the overruns, I think, are in the 15, 70% range, and it's, it's too bad. Projects like this probably involves overruns inevitably. But what bothers me about this one is that a couple million dollars of the change order was because when they let the contract originally to drill under the mountain, they had one drilling methodology. Or at least the contractor had a drilling methodology he had in mind. And I guess he said no to him 17 times, and when he finally found out that he couldn't blast his way through that mountain, he came back with a change order so he could do it with a, with a drill. We've got a, we've got a connection over/under, actually, the BNSF railroad. The contractor originally was going to drill, and Brian would have to explain the details. I couldn't even begin to get it, but they put a product in the opening and then ram it through with something, and the contractor put in a slurry that turned to concrete, and they couldn't ram it. So that part of the whole plan got trashed. We got a change order so they could do an alternate route under an old existing line to enlarge it and so on, and use that... and so on, and use that as an alternate. I am now told, I don't have this as a fact, but I'm now told, that once they let that contract, they discovered that wouldn't work because it didn't provide the capacity. So, now they're going searching for a third alternate for that particular, and, you know, we're talking about a couple million dollars here. I mean, it's just... And, and there's something like, seven or eight different projects, and one of the things that should be obvious to most people, that BBWRA is not real good at managing its projects, either financially or on schedule. And yet, we're piling more and more projects on top of them. And I'm concerned, Councilmember Cox and I talked about it, and he is fairly certain, and I think he's probably right, that some of these are mandated. They just have to do them. They don't have a choice about doing them. But, good Lord, this, this whole thing has just been a nightmare. That, that project is, right now, a year behind schedule. That's the Upper Narrows bypass, drilling under the mountain, going through the city. Look at the folks in Old Town, what they've had to put up with for a year. I mean, it's just, I don't know. Don't know what to say.
Now, I find it interesting, on page 462 of our agenda, it talks about comparison to industry standard on change orders. Industry standard is near 35% of the total project cost, where the Upper Narrows project is 50% below the industry standard. But, I just don't, I don't understand or get how that's relevant in light of the fact that we have the number of change orders, the sheer millions of dollars that have been spent, and the amount of time that it's taken.
Well, and it's, and it's, I mean, it's funded, at least the intention is to fund most of this Upper Narrows bypass project with FEMA funds. I think we know those funds are in jeopardy. BBWRA is going to go probably $80 million in debt to build the two subregionals. Every, every single, every single change of plan, change of direction, involves going to the state revolving fund to borrow more money. And I just, these are 30-, 35-year loans. Before the loans ever get paid off, the facility itself is going to be obsolete. I mean, this is just-
Do we, what was the amount that FEMA-
It will be.
-recorded BBWRA?
It will be. What?
What was the amount that FEMA-
Brian, can you come, come down to the microphone, just to-
I, Mike, the reason I ask that question while you're coming up, Brian, and this may be a legal question and require us to have discussion in closed session, but I'm curious to know what liability would come back against the city if FEMA decided to basically withhold that money, or request it back. I don't know exactly where it's at in the process of being paid, BBWRA, so-
I think that-
-what that amount is, and do we have any liability associated with that as a member?
I think they've paid about, FEMA has paid about $35 million on about a $38 million dollar commitment.
I don't have the dollar amount. They've paid in front of me, but they have-
I'm in the right range.
BBWRA has submitted some reports that have the amount, they've been reimbursed to date, and FEMA reimburses 75% of the project costs if they're eligible, and then OES, the 75% of the remaining 25%, so I, if I remember right, I think it's roughly 8% that has to come out of BBWRA somewhere in that neighborhood, if all the eligible costs would be reimbursed. And I guess that's the big question, and what the liability would be for the member agencies, if the reimbursements weren't approved, would, they'd all be responsible for those costs somehow to come up with?
Responsible for paying FEMA back?
Yes, that's my understanding.
BBWRA will be responsible.
BBWRA would be.
If BBWRA doesn't have the money, then that makes each of us as individual member entities of that JPA liable, doesn't it not?
Well, their approach is just to go to the state revolving fund. What concerns me, this is a worse case than I don't want to predict it, but what concerns me is if, if FEMA withdraws that money, I don't know what OES will do. And they have to pay back $38 million. The only way they're going to get their hands on that money is from the state revolving fund, and that means they're going to have $38 million they won't be able to spend on the, on the subregional. I guess, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, and you gotta wonder, why the state revolving fund up there, Sacramento, would loan money to BBWRA when FEMA's taking it away from us? That may be a different question. I don't, I mean, I guess it's possible.
Has to be asked.
Well, it has to be asked, because if they think that they're just going to be able to go to the state when the feds have taken the money away from them, I, I don't see the state, you know, bending over backwards to say, "Here's $38 million to replace the $38 million that FEMA just took away from you."
Well, and I think at some point, Victorville is going to have to, I mean, this council's probably going to have to give me an instruction that says, "Stop voting for more borrowed money." I mean, this is an organization that, the way they account for debt is very strange. It's nothing I've ever seen, but I, frankly, I know on the books, there's about $28 million. I think this organization is going to be in debt to the tune of $110 to $120 million on about $12 million a year of revenues. And, and on those revenues, they aren't generating a whole lot of surplus. Arguable whether they're generating any, but I, I mean, I see this thing as a, as a, as a real financial risk for everybody involved. I do. I just, it really concerns me, and it has for a couple of years. And they just keep on going. Just keep on going. Keep on going. Keep on borrowing more money. Keep on building more projects. I, I don't know when we, and we produce 60% of the revenue that flows into BBWRA. It was about 67. It's now down to about 60. So, that means we are, on 11, $12 million of revenue, we account for about $7.5 million of it. Seven, somewhere in that range. Seven million. And we, our vote is equal to four other, three other communities, none of whom produced 20 million. I mean, 20%. They're all less than 20%. We're one vote.
Well, I think that that goes to my concerns, as I just stated, and I appreciate this information, but we've got larger questions to ask. We've got larger answers to get on, and I, you know, I would like our, our legal counsel to explain to the, to this, to this council exactly what liability we have associated with on those FEMA dollars if, for whatever reason, they are taken away from BBWRA, and BBWRA is not able to secure a revolving, state revolving fund loan. Because I would imagine, if I understand joint powers, authorities the way I think I do, that we're all assessed based upon whatever's due, and if it's based upon percentage of revenue that we help that entity generate, and it's somewhere in that 60% to 70% range, then 60, or 60% to 70% of that $38 million, we're going to owe. And I, if that's, that's just my, you know, my basic understanding of legalities of it. I'm sure there's a lot more to it, but I would like to at least have a better understanding of that.
There's, there's just so much more to it. I mean, we, we operate a plant at the base that has a capacity, Brian, $2.5 million gallons a day?
Yes.
And we do it with, what, three, four people? BBWRA operates a plant with $13 million, $13 million gallons of capacity, maybe five times the size of our plant, and they do it with 45 people?
I'm not sure the number of their staff.
Yeah, well, it's pretty close to that. I mean, I'm tossing out some, some rough numbers, but you just-
Do you have a question?
I have a question. And we, like you mentioned, our own capability here at the base. Would we, if we, when we're diverting some flows, would we charge $8,000 for a yogurt shop?
We don't know, because we haven't undertaken our own fee study. We have a contact with MBS, and they just have started on looking at a connection fee study for our own plant, so we really don't know what our connection fee would be right now.
Well, the reason why I ask is just, you know, you shut down a major area in this city, delays, you know, a year, and it's, you know, change orders here and there. Next thing you know, I'm starting to think, you know, wait, we have this capability as well. I'm not sure that they're being efficient, especially when we're not, our input, and Councilmember Kennedy's input seems to have been ignored. So, I'm disappointed, to say the least.
I'm not going to say ignored. They listen to me. They listen to, how do you not, right? I'm pretty overbearing, but, you know, and the fact is, I have not voted against some things I really wanted to vote against. I did vote against the change orders, but when they came back with all da-da-da-da, da-chip-da, you know, I, I caved in like everybody else. I voted for those subregionals, and I've had concerns about them since the day they came online. We're paying, we are paying for improvements inside Apple Valley and inside Hesperia that, in my humble opinion, should be the responsibility of those communities, but because they're in the total project cost for those subregionals, we're paying for 60% of, and will for 35 years.
Well, I, from my perspective, I would ask at least that we get some sort of legal counsel on this at a future meeting.
We'll get that scheduled, whether it's open session or closed session, between Andre and Charlie and I will figure that out.
But whatever, however it needs to be, agenda is, I think it would just be appropriate.
Now, one, not to pile on, but one thing that hasn't been brought up that is of great concern for me is that should the city of Victorville decide this isn't for us anymore, this JPA, and I'm not suggesting it at all, but should we make that decision, there's a 30-year notice requirement for us to pull out of the JPA.
30 years?
30 years, yes.
30 years.
I had a feeling it was kind of hanging out the way.
We might want to consider giving it next week.
None of us were here when they made that decision.
That is correct.
I, I think if we're going, I want to request, if we're going to have a discussion on this, there are some projects that are mandated. Mr. Kennedy and I have discussed that, that they have no choice. And I know that some of those mandates we had avoid, but if we have a concern about paying back money, and apparently, that's a real concern, and a concern that if we have to pay it back, we have to borrow from the state revolving fund, we ought to stop and evaluate, what are we doing, what is occurring now that is mandatory, and what's optional? Now's the time to stop everything that's optional. But I don't know what those are, and I know that the engineering department, a lot of the meetings, and possibly that could be a discussion.
And, and I don't know what our legal alternatives are, because as a vote, I mean, I can get outvoted three to one, and, you know, they move forward.
That's when you give the 30-year notice, wouldn't you?
No, I think worse things will happen before the 30 years ever comes around. But, I don't know.
Well, certainly, mayor, it's a discussion.
Yes.
We just have to, and so I'm all in favor of-
Bringing it back. Let's do that. Thanks, Brian.
We will bring it back, then. Do we have a date for when we want to bring it back?
Whenever they get prepared, they'll let us know.
I, I would think most of this should be ready relatively quickly, even though we've got the holidays coming up. I know the first meeting in January is set aside for the special meeting, perhaps second meeting in January, first meeting in February, that kind of a timeframe, I believe, but we should be able to have at least some part of a discussion, closed and/or open session.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask, since this, I don't know if this is a potential litigation issue, and we ought to do it in closed session. I mean, we've had this as a public discussion, and Shay is here, and it may end up in the paper tomorrow, and three other commissioners on that board are going to be mad at me for having this discussion. Does it make sense for me to caution that board that we have enough concerns about this, this growing debt situation, that we may want to insist that all optional projects stop? That, I mean, do I want to say things like that to them?
Well, I don't know what the optional projects are until we hear from, it may be when we get down to the bottom line. They're all mandated. I don't know that.
Well, I can tell you the subregionals are not. There's no mandate anywhere that says they have to have subregionals.
Especially with a debt concern?
Well, we have to discuss it, and I think after we discuss it, we're going to have enough information.
I hope I haven't stepped on anything by-
No, no, no.
-making that statement, but I, that's, that's purely optional, and always has been. Recycled water.
We have, we've taken some of these issues lightly, but it's the kind of information this council has to look at because of the size of this debt and the overall implications, not only of future debt and paying it back, but when we start developing our sewer fee studies, and what we're going to be charging our residents, it's going to directly affect our citizens. And so, we have to ask those questions now. I think we have to get the information as soon as possible, and at that point, then I think we'll be better prepared if we need to take some sort of action, or, you know, there's a possibility that at that point, we'll have a better understanding and actually endorse all the projects, but there's enough questions that it's, has to-
And it's not just our fees and our connection fees and our sewer rates at our plant that will be affected. When they come up short of money, they don't have a choice but to raise their rates, and we're going to pay 60% of those increases. And I can't tell you where the city of Victorville or our citizens are getting a benefit from those increases. I mean, the Narrows bypass project has got to be done. It has to be done. We can't have that sewer line running in the river any longer. It's, it's failed once, it'll fail again. We have to do this bypass. Absolutely critical that it be done.
Yeah, but I think when I, when you talk about non-essential projects, I think some of, some of the green projects that they've done over there, the biofuel stuff, and, and I know they're getting awards for that type of stuff, but the reality is, if that's bearing additional cost onto that organization to implement those projects, I just don't think that with everything else that they've got going on, is that really necessary at this time?
I'm looking at a memo from the construction manager at BBWRA who's sent to Logan Olds, who says, "I've got so many projects on my table, on my plate, I can't keep up with them. Please spend another $44,000 so we can hire a consultant to help me keep up and monitor these projects."
Wow.
Really? I'm going to cha, I'm going to challenge it. Let's stop some projects.
Yeah.
Let's stop this kind of...
Oh, it looks like we'll know more, a lot more in February.
Anybody else want this job?
Eric?
You'd love it, man.
So, this will be continued, then? We just don't have a date?
Sometime in January, probably.
Time in January, okay. Now, we move on to D9.
Correct.
Waiver and Consent Agreement, Comec Technical Services. City Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Southern California Listics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the waiver and consent agreement with Comab Technical Services.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is also somewhat related to item number D10, so you can consider them both in one motion, but staff has been working on issues that have arisen after this item was presented, and resulting from some issues that staff and legal counsel have been working on with the parties to this agreement. We're asking that you modify the recommendation and support a recommendation allows for the approval subject to minor, minor non-substantive changes that both council and myself had worked out today.
Thank you. So, both items can be actually voted on at the same time?
I'll move for approval of both items, D9 and D10.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McEckern, second by Councilmember Negretti, to approve agenda items D9 and D10 with minor subna-
Non-substantive.
Okay, changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to public comments. City Manager, do you have some? I don't have any, guys.
Just a couple. City Hall and some of our other facilities will be closed for the holidays, beginning December 24th, and then we'll reopen January 4th. Many of the services that we provide, such as inspection services and other services, are still available by appointment, so if you know anybody that needs an inspection during that time, have them get in touch with the Development Department. Obviously, police and fire and other public safety services are, are available. Obviously, police and fire and other public safety services are, are available. Public Works and many of the other departments will have field crews working on a limited basis as necessary. And just to remind the council and really the public that there are actually, over that timeframe, it's not just a free holiday. There are a lot of holidays, but there's actually two unpaid furlough days in there as well that the employees don't get paid for. But we're shut down the entire time. Day after we come back is our strategic planning update refresh session. That'll be starting a little bit earlier at 2:00 on January 5th.
Anyone else?
I have a comment from the council reports. We had an individual to speak to the council on, under the public comment when we first began the meeting. We don't engage and debate for those individuals who have comments to make, but the idea was of security, and he left frustrated that we weren't listening. He and other people need to know that there's far more planning that have been put into effect that he realizes for the safety and security of this building and all the people who attend the meetings in this council. But you don't tell the enemy what your plan is, and otherwise you have no plan. But for the people here tonight, you can see what is in effect, and I, hopefully, you feel very, very safe. We do. And we're very concerned about those things. We didn't take it lightly, and we're sorry that he didn't stay long enough so that he could be at a point where the city council members respond, or to see what we have in effect. And then, of course, there's a lot more that he cannot see, he will not see, and neither will the general public. But very safe building, a lot of people dedicated to the safety of this building and our other buildings in town, and we appreciate the effort. And Sam Lucia, thank you so much for your efforts in this.
Yeah, I had already said I wanted to thank the chief and the three deputies who are here. The chief and three deputies. One, two, three. I'm an accountant.
Wait a minute, there might be ones you don't see.
Well, actually, Sam's a deputy too, isn't he? Yeah, okay, Mayor, you're right. You know, and this is a difficult issue. I think it was Benjamin Franklin who said, "Those who would give up liberty for security don't deserve either one." And I think it's, it's important that everything we do to try to somehow make ourselves a little safer is going to involve some encroachment on our individual personal liberties. That's one of the problems of living in a free country. It just is. I don't want to give up the right of free assembly. I hope we don't have to go to metal detectors on the front door. We haven't yet, and I hope we don't have to go there. But I want to thank you, gentlemen, very much for your presence. It sends a very important message.
Yes, thank you very much. Makes us feel a lot safer.
Just real quick, Southern California Association of Governments has released the draft 2016, 2040 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. There is a public, or elected official briefing on January 15th from 10:30 to 12 at the Town of Apple Valley Conference Center, and I do have flyers for each of you. There are public hearing dates scheduled throughout the entire Southern California as well, but you can find all that at scag.ca.gov. But I did want to at least make that mention since I'm the regional representative and I'm the SCAG Regional Council.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm sorry, I did forget one thing. I read an article in the paper about insurance. I guess home insurance is a little higher in the desert than it is other places, and I'm not sure why. I know Mr. McEckern could...
I have, I have that article right here. I'm glad you brought it up.
I'm sure you can tell me. Also, this is, we're a storm-ready city, and I have been asked questions if we have maps available because people are wanting to get flood insurance on, do we have flood maps? And we do, and I think almost every real estate office does, and I'm hoping staff will, if it's possible, make those available on the counter so people can pick those up. And because I know two or three different people have asked me so far, they want to get insurance. Do they come to City Hall to get the map, or do they ask their insurance agent? Of course, they can do both, but there's a dearth of information that's available on this that they could obtain from the city. And in regard to the insurance cost, I don't have a clue. And I bring it up because we have an expert that sits here on the council, and maybe he has some information.
Thank you, Jim. I actually had this, and I forgot that I wanted to bring up something about it, but, you know, we do. We sell homeowners' insurance policies on a daily basis. That's a large portion of the business that we do. And generally speaking, this, this New York-based group that did the study admittedly did not take into account the Town of Apple Valley or a lot of other cities throughout the state. And so the cities they did take into account, you know, were falling somewhere down towards the, we're not at the highest cost, and we're nowhere near the bottom, but we're somewhere in between. And that in-between number is, is relative to the number of cities that they even looked at. So I'm, I'm going to, you know, make the plug, and thanks to the folks at Seminole County Fire and the foresight of Victorville leaders in the past, having a protection class three rating is a huge deal when it comes to insurance premium costs. We're the only city in the high desert, I believe, that has that protection class rating. So it is, it's hugely important that we maintain that. So I'm looking at you, Dan, that we, that we continue to maintain that, and if we can better on it, we ought to, because not only does that drive homeowners' insurance policy premiums down, but also commercial policy premiums as well. So that response time is really what is key into looking at insurance premiums. But overall, our prices are not any higher or any lower than anywhere else in Southern California. And quite frankly, you know, you, if you want to have 10,000-square-foot house in Newport Beach, you're going to be paying a lot higher than you would a 10,000-square-foot house in Apple Valley, California. So it's just all relative.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, everyone, that's come out. Hope everyone enjoys their holidays. When we do come back on January 5th, we're going to have a strategic planning session that I've been looking forward to. I think we made a lot of progress this last year, and I think there's a lot of great folks here working to achieve all of our priorities and mutual goals that we've set up. But I'm looking to really focus on things next year, like getting the city back to work five days a week, as an example. Whatever that takes. I mean, if we can talk about it, the strategic planning session, great, maybe January 19th. But just what, what is the plan? And just, I'm really looking forward to get the input from this council on January 5th that'll really set the table, I hope, for the rest of the year. And I hope everyone has a safe holiday. Thank you.
I also want to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas, a prosperous New Year, and stay safe. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.